Heavenly Father, we pray that you'll bless our city and bless the people that live here. Continue to make the place that we all enjoy to work in and live in. Pray that you'll bless this council meeting tonight, the members here, and that they might make wise decisions and honor you. In Jesus's name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Chris Ayler?
Here.
Wayne Best?
Here.
Buddy Holly?
Here.
Kenyon Mead?
Here.
Ben Minna?
Here.
Lonnie Wright?
I'd like to welcome everybody to the Harlem City Council meeting tonight. It's August the 4th, 2015. Included everybody's pack is a copy of the minutes from the July 14th meeting. Is there motion to approve those minutes? Most by Councilman Best, a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Holly. Councilman Best.
Yes.
Councilman Holly. Floor's open for anybody who has any corrections or amendments or releases of those. Big none call real quick.
Chris Ayler?
Yes.
Wayne Best?
Yes.
Buddy Holly?
Yes.
Kenyon Mead?
Yes.
Ken Minna?
Yes.
Is there motion to pay the salaries?
No.
Second.
Most by Councilman Aver. A second by Councilman Mead.
Yes, sir.
Floor's open for question or discussion. Big none call real quick.
Chris Ayler?
Yes.
Wayne Best?
Yes.
Buddy Holly?
Yes.
Kenyon Mead?
Yes.
Ken Minna?
This time we hear delegations from the audience. If anyone would like to address council, you may do so at this time. If you wouldn't, stand and state your name and try and limit your comments to three minutes that accommodate others that might like to speak. Bill.
Bill Alexander. Mayor and councilman. Us people from the north end of town are really happy and proud of us for getting our lights in before you can pull out on the highway and you can see there's a red light or a green light up ahead. We appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Still under delegations.
I'm Bob Jackson. I was interested behind this building next door, this building over here, the Browder Building. And I need access to the building, you know, and I think the city council is maybe going to give me the authority to get to it. So far, I'm probably seem like I'm landlocked behind. I can't get to the bottom place unless I've got some kind of access to that opening place down here and up on the top. I'd like to have access to that first unloading place, that roll-up door. And of course, somebody said that they thought they maybe had that already. I don't know from the lady bought it before me. And, you know, anything else.
Maybe about 12 foot down the side at least. But you can't work on the side of the building because there's, I don't know where the property line is, but roughly it's going to be about like that. They're not willing to get there to work on the side of the building.
Yeah, if I had that build, that not to interfere with the parking lot, just that white concrete there and just about 12-foot strip across there.
We, I know when that building sold, we, everybody voted to give an easement or a right-of-way back there, but I remember that it did not follow the sale of the building so they would have to come back like they're doing and request an easement again. That's how it was done. I think what everybody was concerned about was just, they just wanted to make sure that it was, wasn't going to, whatever business went in there, it wouldn't hinder the flow of the traffic coming in and out.
Right.
I don't know. I can't speak for council, but that would be, the council would be the one that we would put it on the agenda. If you want to make a formal request, I don't know, probably help if you let them know what you want to use the building for.
Right now, I'm just wanting to fix it up and try to fix it up. Maybe reset it, maybe make a new colony or something. I can't hurt it for sure.
Right.
Because it needs the right smart work done to it.
Can the council sell it? Does it not have to do with the RBD?
Well, the building is being sold from a private owner to another private owner, but the easement would have to be granted by the council because we own this building. That alley is closed. That is an alley, isn't it?
It's an alley. It's not, we've never abandoned it.
Back here?
The one behind the building?
Yeah.
Where the gate, it goes to the edge of this building, I believe, and stops.
There's a railroad track running through it there. I don't know for the railroad we don't either. But I need access to get to it that way. Because the other end, I can't get through the other end because Coppers, I think, owns part of it and then maybe the railroad.
I'll put it on the agenda for next Tuesday and have a vote.
All right.
That's as soon as we can do it. Do you happen to have the old easement that was granted? Do you have that on?
No. Marie might have it, do you?
No.
We probably got it somewhere.
I've got a copy of it.
Okay. I guess, I guess we would just want to look at trying to approve that wording with, just names change that spoon.
I'll forward it to Allison, let her take a look at it.
Okay. Is that okay?
That'd be a man. Thank you.
Thank you. We're still under delegations. No more delegations. We'll move on to old business. Councilman Holly. Councilman Mead.
Yes, sir.
Councilman Best.
Just a couple things real quick. I see the ball fields are down there on the fencing, but we're putting new fencing up. Are we doing anything else to, are we fixing these ball fields as we fence them or we just fenced them and leave them the way they are?
Just replacing fencing as far as I know.
Are we going to do any work to them or are we going?
Can't. You're talking about all infield with them.
Yeah, I thought that was planned. We was renovating the ball fields. That's why we was spending all that money on the fencing, which is renovate them to get them ready to do tournaments and things like that to try to bring more people into Harlem. And I went down, looked at them, and they're, they're not in real good shape. I think while the fencing's down, is the best time to start, you know, putting some work in.
I talked to Matt Ladd this weekend. He said he would be interested in helping on a couple of those fields, hauling stuff in. I don't know, the dirt that goes in there, you talking about building my back up?
Yeah, because right now they're slanted down and they're just, they're holding water.
Where we getting that from?
Knoxville. We're replacing pretty good by, I'm going to check the word, Drexton, got some years ago for the high school field. The French Association of Ball Field.
Wonder how much it is?
I don't know. A lot of it just needs a little grading down, just where it's forced out. But the, I'd like to see us look, you know, if we're putting, putting $70,000 on the fencing, I'd like to see us, let's try to get the fields up to where they need to be.
You know, it's trading, it's numbers on it, put it on the agenda for next week.
If you would, yeah.
There we go.
What do you plan on putting in there, topsoil or crush brick? I think you just, that ball field sand, it's like a clay, but it's a sifted sort of, I think Knoxville's where you have to get it from. But if you look at outfields, outfields are doing this right here, probably just need some topsoil put on those and some grass on them. The other thing, the TDA money that we got, where we at on the interstate and some things we was going to work on fixing up.
The money should be here any time. I think, I think Kevin was going to reconvene that committee. There was a committee, a couple of councilmen, they were going to look at it.
So we hadn't got TDA money yet, that's what was waiting?
I haven't. But they're, they're already went through the plans to come back to here to get an approval on. Here's what we want to do here, here's what we want to do here, we want to do landscaping here, replace a fence here, whatever. That's what they're working on, to try to be ready for when the money gets here.
That's all.
Councilman Aver.
Yes, sir.
Councilman Minna.
Is the railroad going to fix that crossing on Highway 2? Gets worse now in the horse when we start working on it.
I think they're finished. I can call and, I can probably send a text to a guy right now, find out before the meeting's over. I'll check.
I look at that, I saw that all the time. I think probably answers to repay both sides.
The acre?
Yeah. They're not going to raise the load of that railroad. It's a good direction, but the road is worth it. If you come down that hill and the Harlem, you're aware of one of these roads.
I go through there every day. The fact that the left lane is easier, it launches you a little less further than the right lane. That's all.
Okay, I'm checking right now. Department reports. Dr. Curly.
I've got one item to report. The loan request that we made with Tom Crowder, we have a copy of the approval letter and we should be closing the loan next week. That's all I have.
Department reports.
Yes, sir. Next week, just a reminder, our GoDills.com auction will be on there all week next week. It'll be surplus items and seized items. And also this evening after the meeting, we'd like to invite everybody down for a national night out down at the David Webb Riverfront Park. We have plenty of free food and plenty of things for children to do. We'd love to see everybody down there.
Please.
Next week, yeah, it starts Sunday night. They'll run it for seven days. I think we're looking at around 12 vehicles and a few other odds and ends on surplus items.
Chief.
Mayor, on behalf of guys, got a few things here. Trying to change up little things with the fire department. I'm trying to start giving y'all that February report every month on what's going on with the fire department. I'm not going to go over everything we got. Just got a couple important things on there I didn't want to bring you up to. This coming Thursday, we're going to be having a roadblock at Real Tandem at South Roman Street for Kennedy Land. We gave money to it, but I mean, we've not, as a fire department and Ryan being part of the fire department, he was part of it and lots of members of the best was there, so we got, we're just trying to do something, you know, show me all that, you know. The city is still thinking about it and we're going to try to help them out on it a little bit. August the 24th, we're going to have a free community, American Heart Association. It's a family and friends CPR AED course. It lasts about two hours. This does not search you to get a card. It's just, it's just a free quick crash course CPR. There's no charge of that. We're going to have that at Station 1. We probably got about sixes that signed up for it right now, so if you know anybody just, and wants to get it without a card, I mean, you know, or, you know, we can set up classes, you know, for a card down the road. I mean, this will be a free. We're hoping we'll get, we'll get a bunch turned in on that. Still working with the city manager on some equipment issues and stuff, you know, that we've been talking about, you know, for the last five or six years. And I'm kind of grateful that Commissioner Minna brought up about the railroad tracks. We've got an issue right now with Engine 4, some springs, some pretty major issues about it. And I've got a couple of reports where we've been, where we've run into midtown. And one of the first initial calls after the track was fixed, the guys didn't realize the track was that hard and they don't kid them going full blast, but it kind of shut the truck very good. Now we've got some spring issues, so that may be something, that may be a contributor to it. We've got TML looking at it and I'm sure a couple of city members will elaborate on that.
Okay, thank you. Department reports. Mayor, do you have anything? Committee reports.
Mayor, my, I-
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Yes, go back.
Few things for your consideration. I don't have a resolution yet, but I have been following up with EPA with regards to buildings at the paper mill site. Spoke with Scott Miller with the EPA. He said that they're still waiting some of their soil sample reports, those tests to come by. Expect that to occur within the next two weeks. Once that is complete, they will develop an overall plan for the property that will be presented to the community for review and comment. And in particular, he's trying to schedule a conference call for the two of us and representative from me and Wes Baker to discuss the buildings in particular, so I hope to have additional information on that in the very near future. Would you like to let you know that we have received a draft report from impasse from, with regard to the fire department, a sort of an overview of the department, personnel, equipment needs, operations, things of that nature. I'm scheduling a meeting with the consultant to put that report together to discuss some questions that I had, reading through the report. And as soon as we are able to address those questions, we'll finalize the report and get that out to the council. Want to remind you all that at the workshop on August the 18th this month, we do have scheduled presentation on the HADA program so that you can get all the questions that you have about that program answered, so it can be considered as we move forward with next year's budget. Also, wanted to report to you, at the golf course, we made a seasonal part-time hire, an individual named Dustin Murray. We did do this in an expedited process. We had an employee that essentially just left one day with no advance notice. It's in the middle of our busy season and we didn't feel like we could go through the two-week process that it would take to advertise, do interviews and so forth, so we put out a call the best we could for applications and this is an individual we selected. We made sure that he understood that because of the expedited process, he would work through the end of this season, but we would redo the process next year with a full call for applications and interviews and so forth. Finally, as Chief Goff mentioned, we do have some issues with a couple of the engines in the fire department. We have been working on those. Engine 4 is the one that has the most significant issues. Essentially, there's two things that need to be addressed with that particular piece of equipment. The first is the suspension, front-end springs and so forth. That engine has been sent to the mechanic in Knoxville. He's taken it apart, evaluated what needs to be done. Cost for replacing all of those items is approximately $6,653. We are trying to see if that can be covered by TML through a claim, but that's undetermined at this time, so we may or may not be able to get those funds back. Additionally, it needs a complete maintenance of the brakes on the engine. It's not really a repair issue, so to speak. It's just general maintenance on the brakes. That would cost approximately $4,140, putting the total at approximately $10,800 for that particular vehicle. We're also in the process of trying to get Engine 2 back to its operating capacity so that it can go into reserve service. It's not been utilized for some time. The mechanic felt like the cost on that particular piece of equipment would be about $2,500, although the biggest variable there has to do with the pump which is leaking and exactly what all getting into the, once he gets into the pump, it requires from a repair standpoint, but he was hopeful that he could simply replace the packing on that pump and in doing so, thought the maximum cost. In that scenario, we'd get about $2,500. So these are pieces of equipment that we, we really don't have an option whether we utilize them or not. We cannot utilize them in their present state, so I would ask the council to go ahead and authorize those repairs so that we can get those pieces of equipment back in operation at present. We have the ladder truck and one engine that is operable. From that standpoint, we do have the rescue truck that has had its engine replaced and it is back in service now, but we do not have any engines in reserve at this point in time. Can you motion over there?
Anyone do motion?
Authorizing the $10,800.
We'll wait on TML on that or you want, I have to?
I don't think we have any choice but to go forward. And then if you want to, whether or not you want to consider in that motion as a separate motion, delaying Engine 2 would be an additional 0.5.
Make a motion if you. So please.
Yeah, I think we should go ahead and make the motion for the Engine 1 repairs to be made and-
Motion on the floor to go ahead and do the recommended repairs on Engine 4.
Is it 4 or 1?
4. Sorry. 4. Say. Motion by Councilman Aver. Second by Councilman Best. Councilman Aver.
No.
Councilman Best.
Just like Kevin said, I don't think we have choice. I think we got to have the engine up and going. Something we have to think about as a council, that engine is a 1999 engine. It's going on 16 years old and about 15 years is about what they give these engines, so in the future, we're going to start looking.
Floor's open for discussion, questions.
What's the difference in Engine 4 and Engine 2?
Chief, can you answer that question? Did you hear the question? Different between-
Engine 2 years ago was put back into reserve because we had some of these pump issues and stuff and that's when the new truck was bought in 2010, the last truck that we bought. It was taken out of service and because of issues and stuff and it had been put into reserve. Engine 4 was the main engine that was running out of Station 2. Now, that's where these spring issues and stuff is what we've been talking about and kind of like I'm, like the statement I made. Back when we had the fire in January, I don't know if y'all recall me coming back to y'all and telling y'all that I had TML to come back and look at some of this, you know, what if we had issues. Engine 4 sat down here and from all the water runoff and stuff, the night that we moved it, the evening that we moved it, we had to break it free from, or the water had run off and ice and stuff. Was that part of it? I don't know. I can't say here and say. Honestly, that's a, that's a colleague. The track issue, I mean, it's, it's just, I mean, it must've been one thing after another, but the Engine 4 was the main. It's, it's a newer one, but I mean, it's still, you know, it's still got, it's still got a lot of age on it as far as new for Station 2. They're both Class 8 humpers. It's just, it's just Engine 4 is a newer one than the old Engine 2. That's the one that's running. You know, and some of the brakes and stuff, you know, I can get it, you know, with city manager, you know. You know, surely, you know, we can get Buddy, you know, maybe try to help, you know, do some of his work, you know, to try to, you know, try to reduce the costs on it.
$1,000 is outrageous price for a freight vehicle.
Roll it forward. Yeah. Roll it forward.
Are these issues we're having with these vehicles something that can be prevented by, prevented with maintenance? Major things that occur?
I think, I think they're just things that occur. Brakes, brakes are utilized and wear out and have to be replaced on a regular basis. The front end, the mechanic did tell me this particular type of engine is noted for having, what's the piece that fastens the spring to the?
Some kind of U-bolt type.
I forget exactly what that piece is called, but he said those are noted for breaking routinely in this particular age and model of vehicle. So unfortunately, that's just something that we're having to deal with. The, the springs were replaced approximately four years ago.
So that's a design issue. Or at least, or at least resolution.
Commissioner Mike, can I just make a statement? We have a maintenance that we do, I mean, every month something's done. We have now, once a year, we have a certified EBT, which is Immersive Vehicle Technician, that comes in and does a complete inspection on these trucks. He's the one that has started finding these things. I mean, I don't know, I mean, the garage does all the oil changes and stuff. I mean, we're doing everything that we can to prevent issues, stuff like that. Can you catch everything? And as much as these trucks run, I mean, you know, our cowl volume just keeps going up, up, up and down, you know. Five, six years ago, we were running, you know, seven, eight, nine hundred cows. Like, you know, we're, you know, we're way into a thousand now. But we're doing everything as far as fire department wise that we can to try to reduce this stuff.
Still under discussion. Motion is to do the repairs to Engine 4, pulling around $10,000 to $11,000. Any more discussion? Do we have a budget to be done, Engine 4 repairs?
We, I talked with Dr. Curly about it earlier today. We'll make adjustments to the proposed budget to accommodate this prior to passage. I don't know if you want to add anything.
That's present.
Any more discussion? Call girl, please.
Chris Ayler?
Yes.
Wayne Best?
Yes.
Buddy Holly?
Yes.
Kenyon Mead?
Yes.
Ken Minna?
Yes.
Motion passes. Still under Department reports. City Mayor.
That's all I have. It would just be whether or not you want to consider the repairs in Engine 2 as well to put it back in reserve status.
I'll make a motion that we approve repair in Engine 2 for approximately $2,500.
Motion is on the floor by Councilman Mead.
Second.
Second by Councilman Aver. It's Councilman Mead.
Yes, sir.
Councilman Aver.
Yes, sir.
Floor's open for discussion about the repairs for Engine 2.
This is a reserved vehicle, right?
Yes, sir.
It's only used in power emergency?
Yes, sir. In the event of a large scale, you know, like we've had downstairs, outside of downtown. Also, prior so, we're required to have one reserved engine for back.
Any more discussion? Questions? Big none call real quick.
Chris Ayler?
Yes.
Wayne Best?
Yes.
Buddy Holly?
Yes.
Kenyon Mead?
Yes.
That motion passes as well. Floor's back.
Mayor, thank you gentlemen for taking action on this because it is, I mean, it is bothering, you know, like Mayor said, I mean, you know, we're, like I keep saying, we're done, but, you know, they're getting so much age on them and I think you're going to see in the same past report, you know, they're causing them, it's, you know, we're going to have to, you know, we talked about replacement for a while now, it's getting, it's getting to a point where we're going to just, you know, doing some figures action, but.
Thank you. Floor's still yours.
That's all I have is your Department report.
Any questions for the council? Move on to committee reports.
Mayor, on behalf of the committee that the council put together to look at the recreation programming, which I believe was Councilman Minna and Vice Mayor Best, they have asked me to provide you with a proposed ordinance that would create a Citizens Advisory Committee for recreational programming. So I'll provide you with a copy of that and if you have any questions, be glad to try and answer those. And if the council is in agreement with this proposal, then the next step would be to place it on the agenda at a future council meeting.
We'll try to put that together and everyone will look at this and then we'll try to put it on next week's, and do that, okay? Next week's agenda. Put that on.
Can you give us the information of the current board that we have, since we're gonna be reviewing? We got her... we already got the Parks and Recreation Board.
Is it Parks and Rec Board, or the Red Board? It's not, it hadn't met a long time ago.
It hadn't met in a long time, but there's already a set of bylaws and everything for it that we might ought to look at for, just for this.
Is it set up as an ordinance, do you remember?
Not sure.
Do you all do that?
I can go back and look through some of the...
Yeah, let's see if we can...
I looked at it at one point in time, and it's been a while, and I can't recall all the details on it at this point. Did I provide y'all with a copy of that information?
Yeah, but I don't think it was ever approved as an ordinance, I think it was just a...
We did eight years, it was eight years ago we started that, I don't remember.
We had to be able to get some of the grants that were going for the golf course, so we had to agree with a set of bylaws.
It was... it was Parks too, I remember, because y'all did the science for Parks, right?
I know the committee discussed it and sort of took some of those points into consideration when they developed this. I'll try and find a copy of that and send it to you.
Okay. Committee reports still. Move on to the agenda, the first reading of ordinance 0815-01, an ordinance entitled Ordinance Amending Ordinance Number 0814-02, being an ordinance to establish a budget for the City of Harrington D for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2014, and ending June 30th, 2015. Dr. Curly?
Okay, let me... If you look at this larger sheet that I gave you, let me give you a little bit of roadmap of what's in it before I read it. You'll see changes they were making to last year's budget. This is not current year budget, they were passing... they're passing an amendment to last year's budget. And we normally do this every year to clean up items that went over budget with those items that went under budget, so that we can basically have a budget in which we have no original lines. Couple of things that were significant in this before I read it had to do with HUB utility grant. If you look at the second page, you'll see that the majority of the change noted tonight would come from the overall lineup. The HUB grant was four hundred and twenty thousand, either fifty-nine dollars, and the Millenburg Building was a hundred and... The title of the ordinance amending ordinance number 0814-02, being an ordinance to establish a budget for the City of Harrington D for this year beginning July 1st, 2014, and ending June 30th, 2015. Where as such, with the adoption of the aforementioned ordinance number 0814-02, final reading on the 21st day of August, 2014, certain changes have occurred in the revenue and expenditures of the City of Harrington, and it has become necessary to amend ordinance number 0814-02 to appropriate the additional revenue which has been received and to authorize expenditures in certain accounts. Whereas several revisions can be made in budget ordinance number 0814-02 without incurring additional obligations therefore or requiring additional emergency tax levy to cover them, now therefore being enacted by the City Council in Harrington City as follows. Section 1 of the budget ordinance number 0814-02 be amended in the following particulars. Funds in the city budget are to be amended and increased or decreased as shown in the following revenue expenditure accounts. General Fund 110, revenue is to be increased by four hundred and twenty-one thousand, eight hundred and thirty-six dollars and forty-three cents. Of the expenditures are to be decreased by six hundred and one thousand, one hundred and twelve dollars and sixteen cents. The expenditures are to be increased by a million, twenty-two thousand, nine hundred and forty-eight dollars and fifty-nine cents. So the total adjustments on both revenues and expenditures total a million, twenty-two thousand, nine hundred and forty-eight dollars and fifty-nine cents. Under the Debt Service Fund 211, we decrease expenditures by three thousand, four hundred and forty-four dollars, sixty-one cents. We increase by three hundred and forty-three thousand, four hundred and sixty-one dollars. And under the Solid Waste Management Fund, we decrease expenditures by four hundred and ninety-three dollars and forty-six cents, and we also increase expenditures by four hundred and ninety-three dollars and forty-six cents, according to those items listed. Drug Fund 619, we decrease expenditures of one thousand, eight hundred and seven dollars, seventy-two cents, and we increase expenditures of one hundred... one thousand, eight hundred and seven dollars, seventy-two cents. Section 2 be further enacted that it be an offer to the mayor or any city council official or anyone having control of said funds in the city budget for the City of Harrington to overspend on anybody that starts said funds other than have set out in budget ordinance number 0814-02 and provided for by the city charter. Said officials shall act in unlawful concern with said funds may be discharged by the ruling authority of said city. Section 3 be further enacted that any part or portion of this ordinance be declared invalid, that it shall not affect the other parts or portions of said ordinance. Section 4 be further enacted that this ordinance shall take back the fund and actuate passage and publication, and will public or prefer acquiring. Fast on first reading this fourth day of August, 2015. Line for Chris Mason, Mayor, and attesting Dr. Chris Daniel.
Sure, motion approved as budget amendment. Motion by Councilman Aver, and the second by Councilman Martin. Councilman Aver?
Thank you, Dr. Curly, for expediting that process and showing us what's being changed.
Councilman Martin? Floor's open for question or discussion about the budget amendment. 0815-01. Just on what you elaborated when you first started on these numbers?
Pardon?
That... that HUB four hundred and twenty thousand dollars, what is that?
That's the CBDG grant. For some reason, they sent it to us instead of HUB, so I had to turn around and send it back to HUB. So, I mean, we got four hundred and forty thousand dollars additional revenue. We also had four hundred and forty thousand dollars of expenditures.
Same way with the Millenburg buildings, we got the...
Millenburg, we paid...
We got it in, but we've...
We paid out the expenditure which increased our expenditure. We got revenue from the county which increased our revenue. So they two offset.
Making a real surprise, the... not a surprise, but the retirement.
Retirement, we had to add an extra hundred thousand dollars.
My only question, what... why was the police and fire, what did we do differently to the increases in salary there?
There was a mistake made on the police salary line when Angie put the numbers in, and I reintegrated it into the budget. Because the police, for some reason, the sale that's supposed to be picked up was just payroll sale. It did not include the overtime and holiday pay. So we basically put in a budget sixty thousand dollars less than what we should have. And a lot of the skirted act of passing, I decided to wait until tonight, when we did all the other amendments to fix that.
Yeah, just like we were hiring freezes and stuff, but we did the last time.
Yeah. It was an era caused by trying to reintegrate the payroll matrix into the budget. I have since fixed that problem.
The forty-eight thousand on the reserved TVA market, what was that?
That's fencing for the office. And we unfortunately don't have that money yet, so we move ahead. But when we get the TVA money, when it comes in, what was set out in reserve will be forty-eight thousand less than what we spent out of it. In other words, you spent with the anticipation of getting.
Floor is still open for questions for first reading, or second reading? Next week for the second reading? Any more questions? Big enough call roll, please.
Chris Taylor?
Yes.
Wayne Best?
Yes.
Buddy Holly?
Yes.
Ken and Me?
Yes.
Ken Martin?
Yes.
Motion passes. Next item to discuss and possibly approve, the Rome County Dispatch Agreement, and also put it in your packet. This is a yearly, an annual agreement that we pass every year. Sometimes there's changes in it. Usually the change... if there is a change, it usually comes in the monthly payment, is kind of what we're all looking at. Monthly payment to them is six thousand, four hundred, four dollars and seventeen cents. Bring the total annual payment to seventy-six thousand, eight hundred and fifty dollars. I don't think that's... is that different than last year, or is it the same? Is it a little higher?
Little bit.
There are motions approved that in agreement. Motion by Councilman Holly, second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Aver. Councilman Holly? Councilman Aver?
No, sir.
Floor's open for question or discussion.
Mayor, does this... does this... what kind of raise does this add to the board's there?
I don't know. One and a half, is it same as the county? Is it? Oh, it'll be one and a half.
Who's our man on the board?
Randy is on the board. Is he still on there?
I believe so, sir.
Is there anybody else representing?
I've never been aware of him.
Could we maybe have them start coming and showing us kind of what goes on, and as far as what they do? Seventy-seven thousand dollars a year, just to give them, just to say here, and I know they do a lot, but I'd like at least them coming. We can... We can ask them, we can go... We can go to it, if you all want to. Do it down there?
I would like... I would like to know what seventy-six thousand dollars you're going for. I think that you're gonna explain to us what that is useful.
When did we... y'all know when we closed, when we switched over to that? From our own dispatch?
No, it's been certainly a while. It was in the nineties, maybe. There has been some issues with all the customers not paying their fair share, so you might want to question whether or not that's been corrected as well.
Yeah, we're... we always stay current.
We pay whatever we're asked. Some units have not, some have been.
They don't cut their service. Pardon? But they don't cut their service. Does this have to be... I mean, I'd like to kind of hear from them before I vote to give them seventy thousand dollars as to what they're doing. Is there a motion on the floor right now? Is there a second? Well, I know, I mean, I definitely might just want to know, I want them to come and tell me, you know, what they're looking at, what they're, you know, what their plans are. Anybody else we give us kind of money, we expect them to come and show us their plan, and... They had a big... they had a big adjustment a few years ago. Yeah, there's a motion, there still is a motion in the second on the floor, and I gotta let it ride. What Councilman Best is requesting, that before we pass this, we get them to come and explain it first. Keep that in mind when you vote. Still under discussion?
I mean, it would be good for them to let us know, too, not only the board, but since we have somebody on the advisory committee too. One representative from the district, and one representative from each user to make suggestions to the board.
They're the only board that does not have to explain the expenditures that they have and ask us to find, so... I think we need to kind of explain that.
Okay, any more... any more discussion? We have to vote on it, because there's a motion in the second. Call roll, please.
Chris Taylor?
Yes.
Wayne Best?
No.
Buddy Holly?
No.
Ken and Me?
Yes.
Ken and Martin?
No.
Okay, motion fails, so we'll... we will ask them to come and do a presentation for us. I'll contact Mike Cooks, see if they'll do that.
Could they do that in motion?
Yeah, probably better. Do we have anything on our workshop coming up, does anyone know?
Higher presentation.
Let's see what his... let's see what he's worked for him. Next item to discuss and possibly approve, signing of a maintenance of effort form for Harrington Library. It's also included in your packet. This is... this is something else that we are required to do every year. Kevin, do you want to explain it?
Essentially, what the maintenance of effort is, once you budget funds for the library, those funds cannot be decreased in the future, so this is a form that certifies that we are appropriating at least the same amount of funding in the upcoming year as we have in prior years for the library. I think probably generally in the past, if this form came after the budget been passed, the mayor just went ahead and signed it because he's basically just affirming what is the budget the council had approved. But since we're... the form has come prior to budget being adopted this year, we've brought the form for you for approval for him to sign and return again. Just certifying that we will be budgeting as required, at least enough funds that were budgeted last year for the library.
Yeah, there's no... no proposed change. Is there a motion to approve the... motion by Councilman Best, second? Second by Councilman Martin, Councilman Best?
No, sir.
Councilman Martin?
No, sir.
Floor's open for question and discussion. It's pretty cut and dry. Call roll, please.
Chris Taylor?
Yes.
Wayne Best?
Yes.
Buddy Holly?
Yes.
Ken and Me?
Yes.
Ken Martin?
Motion passes. Next item to discuss and possibly take action on ballfield fencing, I'll yield the floor back over to Kevin.
As you'll recall, when we took the bids for the fencing on the ballfields, the bids were for a total of five fields. At the time that we approved that, we withheld the approval for the little field at Farmville Flats. We wanted to assess whether or not that field could be reconfigured in some way that might be better suited regarding the lay of the land and the drainage. After doing so, it was determined that the current orientation of the field is essentially the... the only way that it can be laid out on the property as we have it today. So what we're requesting is approval to move forward with accepting the bid that was presented for that field in an amount of fifteen thousand, three hundred and thirty dollars. These are funds that would be part of the TVA funds that we're to receive, and is within the expected amount. We may have a little bit of time on this, but I do believe that for the bid to be honored, we... we need to approve this prior to the company completing the work on the other fields. And there is generally a lead time of about four weeks on getting the material in.
There's a motion on the floor to go ahead and use the fifteen thousand dollars of TVA money. Motion by Councilman Best, second? Second by Councilman Aver. Councilman Best?
No, sir.
Councilman Aver? Councilman Aver.
When do we, do we know when we're going to get those T V A funds? Is there a projected date?
Any day.
I was going to say, it seems like we've been waiting for a while. Two weeks, right?
Be tomorrow. Be tomorrow. Floor is open for questions.
Exactly which field are we talking about?
This is the small field that kind of sits in behind the.
Middle school plays only, don't believe.
Sort of the outfield goes up to the railroad tracks.
More discussion. Call roll please.
Chris Sandler.
Yes.
Wayne Best.
Yes.
Buddy Holly.
Yeah.
Ken and me.
Yes.
Ken Martin.
Yes.
Motion passes. Discuss and possibly approve the L P R F grant application process.
This, this grant is a program that's voted through the state for funding of Parks and Recreation endeavors. We have looked at this as an opportunity to fund our initial plans for the E P A cleanup paper mill site. The grant itself would not be, applications would not be taken until about February of next year with award probably in, in May of next year. And construction wouldn't begin, or authorization to proceed with the project wouldn't be for probably another year from now, if not a little longer. However, there's quite a bit of work that has to be done as a lead up to this. Realize that we do not have title of the property yet and we still haven't determined what we want to include in our first phase. And that can still be determined between now and February, the time that we submit the grant application. Approving this tonight doesn't really commit us to anything. We're just sort of getting the process started. Essentially, there, there are two options voted to us. Generally, the development district there in which you're located for us, that mid-east Tennessee development district, can write these applications. And if they do, they have a provision within the state law that you can award it to them without doing any requests for proposals and so forth. If you want to consider a private company to do the grant, then you do have to go through a request for proposals. Process does not eliminate the development district from submitting a proposal and being included and compared to the other people who might be interested in writing the grant for us. For instance, the company that does the grant writing for H U B would be one such private entity that would be interested in this work. Have worked with them in the past and they're very good with these particular grant programs. So what I would recommend is that you authorize the mayor to put out the call for the request for proposals. Those who would come back to the council with a recommendation and a future date for this particular project. Would note that this particular grant program does allow the praise value of the property to go towards the fifty percent match the city is required to put up. So depending on the size of your project and what the value of the property is, it can be done without any cash contribution on the city's part. And the fees that are involved in compensating the companies, generally there are no fees associated with writing the grant. If they write the grant and it's funded, then they would administer the grant. Administration fees were built into the grant at a set amount and it does not matter which entity you choose to do the grant. Fee would be the same. So as a result, we would want to base our decision, I think, on the firm that we think has the most experience and would put together the best grant application for the city.
Is there a motion to go ahead and put out the, go through the bid process to get some proposals for, to write this grant?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Martin and a second by Councilman Aver. Councilman Martin. Councilman Aver.
I think this is a great start because, you know, grant money is incredibly important for us and I think they have a standardized way of proposing these grants would be good for us.
Floor is open for question or discussion.
Is there a certain amount on this?
I'd have to go back and look at it. The cap is somewhere between two hundred and fifty and five hundred thousand and you can request anything up to whatever that cap is. We would basically base our request on what we end up deciding to include in the project. The other thing I did fail to note, this particular grant is awarded on a two-year cycle. So if we do not seek the grant funding in twenty sixteen cycle, it would be twenty eighteen for, funds would be available then.
Is there any more discussion? Call roll.
Chris Sandler.
Yes.
Wayne Best.
Yes.
Buddy Holly.
Yes.
Ken and me.
Yes.
Ken Martin.
Yes.
Want to remind everybody, Thursday, August the sixth at six P M, try to go by the Harrington Library. They got Melvin Page. Going to speak at the Harrington Library. Probably wouldn't be long, but it would be great to hear Melvin. He's a comforting veteran and has a great story to tell. Also, don't forget to go by the farmer's market. Still going on Wednesdays and Saturdays, correct? And also don't forget to shop Harrington. Shop Roman County when you can. So motion due adjourned.
Second.